I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 6, 2022 combination public meeting and work session of the planning board of the Village of Southampton, New York. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
I will make a motion to open the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, let's start. The first thing on our I thought he was muted, I'm just First item on our agenda is public hearing for 689 Halsey Neck Lane. And I'm wondering if there's anybody in the audience pertaining to that?
Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing for subdivision for Terry Theodros crop hole is.
Yes.
We have received the affidavits of mailing and posting and they're in order. So perhaps a motion to open the public hearing?
I'd like to move that we open the public hearing.
Second it or or make a motion to second it or whatever you want?
Just second is fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, let's start.
Hi, good evening Karen Hoog from the Law Department, Timmy Latham. This is a pretty straightforward application to subdivide the existing single seven acre parcel into two separate lots. Lot one will be 176,987 square feet and lot two will be 127,974 square feet. The application for the subdivision did receive DEC approval on February 28 of 2022, which I submitted to the board and Health Department approval was also received on March 18, 2022. And a copy of that stand map has been submitted to the village as well.
Great, thank you. Yeah, this is we've reviewed it and it's pretty, it's very complete. So is there anyone else in the audience or in Zoom that from the public that wanted to talk about it?
No.
Okay. So what's the next step? Just because I'm a little
To make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, well, one thing I wanted to mention first is that when we did the sketch plan approval, at that time, we did not know the size of the second house, which I think was shown as a cottage or and we made a condition of the sketch plan approval that they may have to file a covenant. If it was not verified to be the correct size of a single family dwelling and it has now been verified as a single family dwelling. Do you have that in front of you?
And it meets and it meets the setback for a single family home. We had no dimensions on it. We thought, you know, it was shown as a guest cottage, so we weren't sure it would meet requirements for a single family home, so.
And it does.
But now the map actually shows it as an existing one-story single-family residence and it meets the setbacks and
And it meets current setbacks, not like pre-existing, non-conforming setbacks or anything like that? Okay. Okay.
So it's no longer relevant, that's true, that was the point.
Then I would like to move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Aye.
So I guess we could with the next act would be to write up our resolution and approve it? Okay. Next meeting? Is that enough time? Okay.
They come so close together now.
Right, that's true. Well, we'll give it a month, but it's just as long as the applicant knows it's moving forward, I think.
Yep, we'll do our best.
Okay. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing for 71 Hill Street LLC at 71 Hill Street. And it's on for a public hearing tonight. Should I open the public hearing first or did Linda want to say anything beforehand or?
So you should you should make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay. I'd like to move that we open the public hearing for 71 Hill Street LLC.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's begin.
So this is the public hearing for the site plan application of 71 Hill Street and we did receive the affidavits of mailing and posting and they're in order.
Hi, DeeDee.
Good afternoon, DeeDee Moan for 71 Hill Street LLC. I'm the managing member of the owner of the property. I thought I would do with some boards, a two and a half minute summary of the project. And then welcome our team, Linda O'Reilly, as you know, is our counsel. We have Jack Coogan from OCV Architects. He's also going to speak for RK LA Landscape. We have Michael Scanlon who's from PW Grocer. They can talk about the drainage and the STP plant if there are questions. And he's also going to address the lighting plan. And we have Terry Moan, who has been working for the last 30 years in affordable workforce housing within New York City and lends some ideas and support and structure to that if it becomes part of your conversation. Does that work? Is that?
Okay.
Good. Very quickly. I think that this is how we do it. Is this where for camera?
Yeah, just on the table facing the board.
Facing the board.
Can you get that?
Yeah, I have to reset it.
Is there another way we can do something to make it easier for you?
Yeah, we can
It's better to hold it up to that camera or not?
No.
It's the equipment. It's the equipment.
If these are plans that we already have, which I believe they are, then Alex can share them up on the screen. And the board can either look at the screen or look at the table. And that way we just
Would you like me to do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, please. Is there a is there a title for this particular sheet that you have there?
This is the only one, of course, that's not part of the set of plans because this is from approximately 10 years ago when this started. But I thought for the board, this is a it's a graphic design rather than surveys or specific. But this is the Southampton Inn as well as 71 Hill Street with Varadian Way separating them. And it's just very, very clear. All of this is going to stay. The only thing we're addressing is this building, two buildings, CD, which are being replaced with two more buildings, one and two. The use has been changed in accordance with the Village Board of Trustees' resolution two years ago. And I'm just offering it as clarity.
This is existing conditions, so we said.
This is existing conditions, but not in a survey, just in a graphic.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I don't think we need to be repetitive and Alex has this, but this is the actual survey from Squires Holden. And as you can see, this dotted red line within the 200-foot radius here is what's proposed to be coming out. The buildings E and F are going to stay. We're going to keep their nomenclature. The use on the upper floors will be changed, assuming the ZBA says that that's acceptable.
You can lay it down.
Oh. Yes. Okay. I think you've seen this, but this has some of the comments from Kathy and from the board. Two buildings, each of them is approximately 17,000 square feet. They're two and a half stories, the third floor being a half a story per zoning. Each of them will have 22 resort hotel units, sort of a high-end, modern. They have kitchenettes, they have private patios or balconies, they have washer dryers in them. And they are surrounding a little courtyard area with an Olympic-sized lap pool, which will be heated, but seasonal. The drop-off is on Varadian. There's parking and 59 cars in total. We have two handicap spaces and we have two truck parking spaces here. There's a sewer treatment plant at the north end. It's screened and we will have a person hired on a year-round basis to be working. The sewer treatment plant offices in the lower level of building one. There's 100% expansion level. The pervious lot coverage has gone from 88%, which is what we have in our existing conditions, to approximately 55% check?
69.
69, 85 to 69. So we have more green area and over 75% of the plantings are going to be native plantings. And that's something we can tweak as we go. I mean, the idea is to have the deer not like it so much, to have the guests not have so many stinging insects that might hurt the hospitality and tourism part of this, but also to make this a wonderful green space to the extent that we can. I think you've seen these and this also can be tweaked a little bit, but as you can see, they're one-bedroom little suites. The Southampton Inn are only guest rooms. And any one of them come in, there's a little kitchenette, there's a washer dryer, you're going, living room, separate bedroom area with a built-in desk area, which we can love. And then coming out onto a porch, which is going to be eight by 24. So the outside aspect of these is pretty robust for being in the Village of Southampton and not in an urban environment. Top floor a little bit differently done because you still have a central corridor, there is an interior elevator, but we are going to have 50%, no more than 50%, actually less of the size of the envelope. So these become very much thinner with one exposure only and they still have very lovely outdoor areas that are attached to the suite units. Elevation. Two buildings, this is from Varadian with a sort of portico area. It's going to have trellis size, but it's going to have a covered roof. Depending on ZBA, I would like to be able to do this lovely sort of sky bridge that goes from one building to the other. It's not necessary, but it's awfully nice. So I think it would be a lovely design feature if we're able to.
Sky bridge just for?
To walk.
To walk?
Yeah, I mean, to actually physically connect the two buildings. So if somebody has a granny in building one and they have the other children in building two. And part of the beauty is that people can take smaller units for their two-week holiday and they're able to rent rooms at the hotel potentially or another connecting unit, since most of these units do connect. So they can bring family in when they need to. I hope everybody likes it and that it's a nice idea. And then we have four workforce housing units and hopefully two market rate residential units. These were, the use was part of the 116-5F, which Linda is going to address. Basically, what we have now for building, I'll start with building E. Where's building E? You have to do E and then F, sorry. This is where Merrill Lynch had been and before that was Villroy and Bosch. And now it's divided into two areas. There is an art gallery on Hill Street and there's a bank at the northern end of this building. All of the ground floor per the zoning are going to stay as commercial units for now. It's the second floor and the half stories that we're requesting permission or special use permit to be able to convert them from office in the building F to residential. It's not necessary, but I think it's something that the village needs. If we can, we will, and if we can't, then these units are part of the workforce housing right here. There will be a sky bridge that's going to go from an elevator in on the first floor, second floor of building F. Building F.
Building F is the one that's to the east?
Yeah.
Okay.
I should put them together. Building F is the one to the east. Building E at the moment is the single story and then has a second story that would be built into two one-bedroom units. They're both under, one of them is 596 square feet, the other one is 598 square feet. And they have washer dryers and I think they're going to be lovely. And I hope that people enjoy them and are safe and happy in them. And we can discuss more how it's going to run if that's something with the administration of the leases and the leasing, if that's something we want to be discussing. For building F, ground floor is four separate suites right now. The second floor, we're hoping that the two middle units will be able to become workforce housing. And they're also, they're actually quite large. They're 712 and 742 square feet. So they're pretty significant one-bedroom apartments. And then on the corners with the windows on the three sides, we were hoping to do a market rate that will stare up to the half-story above it, which is all there now. So in terms of the envelope of what the village has seen for the last 25, 30, 35 years, nothing from Hill Street should be changing, but you are going to change the interior uses with some renovation to make them from commercial into the residential uses. The market rate units are going to have the bedrooms on the top floor. And then the bottom floor is going to be living room, library, a wonderful kitchen area with some dining. They should hopefully be very lovely. That, I think that's it? Oh. Oh. This is the Tony drawing? We have landscape plan here and on the other side of it, a lot of the choices of the various shrubs and trees and perennials, we're taking out as little as possible retaining. I'm going to let Jack speak to that. I also didn't include the lighting plan. There were some comments from Kathy. That's being done. I'm sorry, I forgot. Cisco Hennessy is the engineering firm that's doing lighting design. It's from their California office, so they're three hours off. But I believe the new plans that were submitted are in compliance with the Dark Skies Law and also the federal safety guidelines for properly lighting tourist types of facilities. That's it. I'm sorry. It was more than three minutes. Did I turn this over now to Linda? Is she going to be able to walk you through the process, procedure of the bills? Thank you very much.
I always think in a public hearing, it's a good idea to go over some of where we've been so far. So a lot of you know this already, but it is a special project under a special section of the law under the zoning code, Section 116-5F, which specifically and sort of unusually authorizes the Board of Trustees to grant a special permit use for a resort hotel and for the workforce housing units. They were granted together following a public hearing by the Board of Trustees in resolutions that were adopted in April 20, 21, and an amendment that was adopted on November 9, 2021. So the Board of Trustees has already granted the special exception permit use for the workforce housing aspect and for the for the resort hotel. We do have a few few things that have to go to the ZBA, but we've been discussing that with staff. We've had several meetings with you already, which have resulted in many revisions to the plan to accommodate recommendations made by staff members, consultants, board members. And these plans, which have all been submitted, are, I think of them as being a result of a collaboration. Among other things, the planning board reviewed the long-form EAF that was submitted by the applicant, which was deemed a type-one action. So it was a long-form EAF that we submitted. And this board adopted a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA on April 18, 2022. The lot comprises the entire length of the northerly side of Varadian Way off Hill Street in the VB District. The entire southerly side of Varadian Way is occupied by the Southampton Inn, which is owned by an affiliated, but separate entity, totally separate entity. Varadian Way is cul-de-sac, so there are no other lots on Varadian Way and there is no through traffic. The lot, as DeeDee just pointed out to you, is currently developed with two-story buildings facing Hill Street, which you've seen just now, currently occupied for commercial uses. And the proposal include only, you know, the renovation of the upper floors of those buildings. From the outside, it will look much the same as it always has. It would be, to the average eye, there'll be no change at all. Four of the apartments are proposed to be dedicated to the workforce housing that's already been approved for people under certain income limits set by the code, again, 116-5F2, who have full-time employment in the village and they will be leased for one-year leases for people who are going to occupy them as their principal dwelling. Buildings E and F will have only minor exterior improvements. They'll continue to look the same. And most of the new development is really concentrated to the resort hotel, which DeeDee has presented on boards in some detail. So my only purpose was to cover some of the legal groundwork, the history and where we are right now. And then I think what we want to do is open it up to comments from the public or questions from the board or the public and have an opportunity to come back. We have all of the people, team who worked on the project to answer any questions regarding any specific areas that involve their expertise. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions before we open it up to the public. The sewage treatment plant, I think that there's future planning in the village to have a village-wide sewage treatment. I'm wondering if this project would be able to hook up to that or would it be necessary to hook up to it because it has its own or?
I'm going to have I'm going to have Michael Scanlon. I knew that.
Good evening. My name is Michael Scanlon with PW Grocer Consulting, who helped handle the civil engineering on the site. And there, since we don't have anything solid as far as concrete plans for an existing village-wide sewage treatment plant, we have to have proposed onsite sewage treatment plan because we're in a groundwater five management zone. However, if in the future we could tie into a proposed village-wide sewage treatment plan, it would be an opportunity to do so. However, the current plans meet all South County Department Health Services regulations and that's how it's proposed as of now. But it could always be looked at in the future if the applicant determines that they would like to, to tie into it.
What would it be? I guess my question is, are you planning to make it an easy tie-in if that day comes? Or is that, I don't, I don't know much about sewage treatment plants, so.
I think the village's sewage treatment plan is a long way off. It does take sometimes a decade to get those plans approved and installed.
Okay. At that point.
It's not happening in the next year.
Yeah, this was started 10 years ago, as we have discussed, with the possibility of tying into the sewer, a municipal sewer, which would be terrific. But at this point, the building, the infrastructure and structure of building CD needs to have something happen to it. It's either going to be renovated as offices at the moment or it's going to come down for what I think is a better use for the owner, for the community, for our visitors. So that's, we have to do something. In addition, some of the plans that I've seen of the master plan, and I know others know a lot more about it and Alex is here, some of them don't include 71 Hill or the Southampton Inn. They were cut off to the east of these properties. And this went into Section 2 or even Phase 3 of a potential municipal sewer district. So, you know, we're not here to, I mean, I'd hate to put in a sewer treatment plant and then a year later find out that we wouldn't have had to do it, but I think this will work and it will certainly do all of the things that we want environmentally to be able to support the development properly. Thank you.
Thanks. And then the other question, with the workforce housing, I think Linda said that the people that would be able to rent those apartments have to be full-time village employees in the village?
Well, we're, the statute doesn't say that.
Oh.
The local law does not include that requirement, but we are working with the Board of Trustees, which presumably will sort of be following up with us on the administration of these leases. And that's the kind of thing we've been talking about. So frankly, I probably shouldn't have used it in my introduction because I don't think of it as something the planning board will be administering on an ongoing basis. I think we'll have an agreement with the Board of Trustees that they will monitor and there'll be guidelines.
I understand that we don't have any, it's not in our purview, but I just was curious because it's an interesting concept.
Our idea is for it to be for village residents. They may not live in the village now, but people who have full-time jobs in the village.
Whereas now it's open to a much broader area, isn't it?
It's, there's no
No restrictions.
There's no restriction in the, in the code. But I think my client's vision is that we have it for people who are working locally. It cuts down on traffic and, you know, that's, that's the idea.
Good idea.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone from the public here that would like to? You just have to state your name and
Hi, everyone. I'm Victoria Khan. I'm the owner of the Hill Street Business Center, which is the property immediately to the east of the subject property. And I'd like to speak in support of the plans. I think anything that we can do to help make the village more viable. We do need more hotel space. I think what DeeDee is planning is very exciting. The only question I have relates to the STP because it was my understanding on a previous, this goes back a while, previous hearing, DeeDee had objected to supporting a village sewer, participating in a village sewer. And I know it's a long-term project, but I would hope that the plans allow for a hookup. But otherwise, I'm very supportive of the project. I just wanted to put that on for the record. I think it would be a very good thing.
Thank you.
Can I just ask the addresses of the property, Lady?
Yes, it's, it has 51, 53, 55, has three addresses, Hill Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, is there anyone on Zoom? No.
Is he here?
Nope. Yes, Alex.
I just wanted to clarify on the maps of this potential sewage, sewer area that I've seen this property was included. But of course, the board knows that everything is preliminary at this point.
Oh, I just, I had a question because in our last meeting, we discussed the guest drop-off, but it's still appearing. I know like with the crosshatching and the, as a guest drop-off. So I'm still somewhat concerned about that because I know you said they would do all virtual check-in. But, you know, just in terms of people whose, you know, housing doesn't work out and they might show up, I'm a little concerned about, you know, this narrow street with people stopping in front of that area, maybe blocking traffic and wondered if there's any alternative in terms of like going to the end with the cul-de-sac and having people drop off there in the event that people show up in person or just are looking for the hotel to walk in. So, because we're still showing that on the one page of the plan.
On page four?
Yeah, and just in terms of it being a narrow area, just, you know, if there are people showing up and stopping there, you know, there seems like there's a potential to, you know, especially if you're unloading a car with bags or whatever.
Yeah, it's actually a four-lane road, so it's not so narrow. It's 50 feet wide. And in addition, that's something that I think should be clarified with the Board of Trustees. What we would like ideally is to have striping, as you would for a hospitality or any facility that would be dropping people off. But that's completely up to the Village Board of Trustees. It's their road. If they would like that, we love that. And if they wouldn't like that, then we'll, you know, we'll work with it. We'll have people do what you do when you live in an apartment building in the city. You, you know, drop off, get your bags out and then You, you know, drop off, get your bags out, and then you immediately leave to park. But again, because it's four lanes, I think there is sufficient width there to be able to accommodate that type of use. And most people are not coming in with enormous bags. Most people will take their roll-ons and a shoulder bag as though they've, you know, been on a plane with their two pieces of equipment and their children, which is a lot more equipment. And they just park, and then they would be going to, you know, to either one of the buildings, whichever one it is that their room has been assigned. We hope.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if the Board of Trustees, for whatever, if they don't want the cross-hatching or a place, you know, can we have an alternate plan just so people, like multiple cars don't pull up in front of the building, you know, to create any kind of like traffic?
Well, a couple of other things that happen in hotels, check-in is anytime after four o'clock. And we're proposing that the check-in is going to be the new 2022 where you're checking in with your phone, or you're going to have some sort of a flow code so that you don't need to actually physically get keys to a room. But people are checking in over a pretty wide stretch of time. It's very rare that we're going to have more than one or two people at any one point in time at the Southampton Inn. So, I mean, they come between, I don't know, 10 o'clock in the morning, which is before check-in, if we can come, we will. And then they're also going to be coming at nine or 10 or 11 o'clock at night after their dinner and their drive or their flight to Southampton. And again, the cross-hatching, if the village approves it, would be lovely, just like we were concerned a little bit with safety. And I was kidding about making a red brick road or yellow brick road. We can do things, I think, with some, maybe with some paving, with some painting, with some brickwork. I don't know that now is the time to do it. I'm happy to do whatever is desired, legal, safe, reasonably affordable to make it all function. But this is not a call for us right now. This is, it's up to the village. If they don't want it, it's okay. I don't think we could do a drop-off, though, at the north end of Varady and the cul-de-sac. And that, I think they would just go to their parking places.
Because that's a less frequently used area where it would be safer to like park for a while and not bother anyone. If there was a way to like direct people to the lobby, but since the, whatever the entry, like whatever, well, wherever you enter, not the lobby, but wherever you enter the whole place, you know.
We could. Ultimately, it may be that instead of drop-off at the portico and going to the north or to the south building, it could be that they're going to go, we could instruct, go straight to your parking places with your bags, and this is.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If, in the event that the trustees don't want to do a, you know, designated spot with the designation there, that you could come up with an alternative where people wouldn't just stop there.
No, we can't control them.
No, you can't control them, but like just a plan where they could be directed to an area where other people wouldn't have to go around them, you know, if you're stopped there, just to prevent whatever.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, people bumping into each other.
So the north side of the site, there's a sidewalk on the west side that looks like, does it continue to match up, to meet up with the, is that the sidewalk that's, that goes across the front of the entire building? I think there's a property line and stuff over it, so you can't really see.
The sidewalk goes all the way.
Yeah, but what about past that northern driveway?
Well, you do have the curb cut that we're requesting from the Z B A, so the sidewalk continues.
It does continue.
But it does continue with two curb cuts in the middle there. Actually, this would be good for Jack. Good.
Good evening. Yeah, so the sidewalk goes through to the cul-de-sac. It also goes through to the parking spaces. So if they were to park directly into their space, they'd be able to walk on the sidewalk back to the portico and in.
That's my point. Once you're inside the parking lot, you can safely get to the entrance portico without having to be on the road. It's just on the scale of our copies, it's hard to see those lines.
Right, and as you can see, they are handicap accessible curb cuts all the way through on that path.
Can you please just reintroduce yourself for the record?
Hi, I'm Jack Coogan, O C B Architects, project architect.
Okay. See her side?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
So I guess we can close the public hearing, right? Or, no?
No.
So there's a couple of things, and I'm not, you know, this is unique that we don't have a complete site plan before we schedule a public hearing. So we do have to go through this and make sure that they've addressed all these comments. Suffolk County Planning Commission had also asked for additional time because, let's see if we can mute people. So Suffolk County Planning Commission has not rendered a decision yet on this application. They had asked for additional information, which I sent out on May 20th. And so they have 45 days under their code to render a decision. We're also waiting for the Fire Marshal and Gary Kolesky also. So it's not as if there's going to be a decision very, you know, we still have to resolve some things. I don't know if there's any harm, but that's why I would defer to Alex on that.
So we would leave the public?
I would suggest keeping the record open because we do need these additional comments, at least until the next meeting. And then we can revisit it at the next meeting. I think the 45 days is up at the next meeting?
Yes, it will be by then.
And if we, if they, if we don't get a reply from Suffolk County Planning within 45 days, is there some sort of like automatic trigger that?
I'll let Alex answer that, actually. He's the work there.
I did, although usually they do provide comments within that time period. So I'm not sure what would happen after that. I did want to just let the board know that the Fire Marshal is reviewing this plan. I know he had some concerns that he's working on typing up with regard to the turning radiuses for the fire apparatus. And he may suggest that some of the parking, on-street parking as well as the loading areas on Varady and Way be modified to accommodate that. So we should expect that comment from the Fire Marshal soon.
And Gary's looking at curb cuts and?
Yeah, he also looks at things like if the street trees are removed. So there is one street tree that's existing that's going to be removed, shown on the current plan.
Okay. All right. So we have a few things we're waiting for. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Look at that.
Yeah.
The next meeting.
Okay, great. Do we, do we have to vote to keep, to keep it open?
No, it's open.
It's open, okay. Okay. Our next agenda item, we're in the subdivision review section. 550, 54 Hill Street is adjourned until July 18th. There's nothing that, as a board, we need to look at at this point, right? And 99 Sanford, pending decision?
We have a decision on that.
Do you want to take a look at it? Do you want time? I mean, I don't think there's a huge rush to get it done, but.
No, there isn't, but what decision do we?
So this is an update, so it's an update to the sketch plan approval to remove any reference to the residential use of the site. It's just the conforming subdivision approval.
Okay.
The board had previously granted sketch plan approval. We had a new application in public hearing, and this is a new sketch plan approval, which does not reference the residential use because it's an office district.
Right, it's just the division of the land?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was some condition about the driveways. I looked at it before, so I just was wondering if someone can clarify that. Yeah, what that condition is so that we can better understand what the.
So, yeah, they're creating two lots, and it already has an office with this parking lot on it. And the idea is that if we create a lot and the parking lot is still there and it doesn't conform to zoning, that we would like them to remove that. But in the meantime, they may come up with a site plan where they have a shared driveway, which always makes sense if you can make it work. So the condition is either remove it or have an approved site plan that shows a combined driveway.
Okay, so that would be, that will be in the conditions that they file. I saw that they filed something where they would have a driveway, and it said something about, oh, so going over the easements had to do with going over the existing parking lot?
Actually, this is the parking that's on the two, on the existing lot. Not both, not, because there is an easement also. So it's complicated that they have a driveway easement that's shared by this property and the two lots in the north as well.
Okay. Because I, yeah, that, it's come up in other applications, but I just was, can one owner create the reciprocal easement that a shared driveway would require if it's one ownership? How do they do that? That's what I was.
I guess it would be something that would be a condition of the sale, that there would be an agreement that there is a shared driveway. So if the site plan is approved before the property is sold to another entity, then that is part of the, that's part of what that person is wanting.
Okay, yeah, that's something, I just didn't understand that one owner could encumber the property on themselves before, you know, their own property and create a legal entity that would transfer with the property to the next owner. So I'm just, you know, wondering.
They're either going to remove it and have a conforming lot that's up to the next owner to design the driveway. Ideally, we would have one driveway for these two offices. It's going to be two offices. So that's where.
We don't want to require them to have two separate driveways. If it's, if it's two lots that are now subdivided, do they have to have two separate driveways? Because that's something that I'm struggling with.
Because we're setting up a?
Two, the things that they're going to sell to, potentially to two different owners in the future. And then if you have shared driveways in the village, you can run into problems with who maintains them. What if one person, there are all kinds of litigation about fights on driveways. Like, one person doesn't want your guests coming over your shared driveway, then they, you know, so just in terms of litigation, you have to have.
But this is commercial, right? This is a commercial driveway, so it wouldn't be guests?
No, not guest, well, people visiting your commercial property or your law office or your, whatever, your chiropractic, you know, office. If people get into, there has to be a legal entity that goes with the property, that runs with the property, that says, we're both sharing this, and are anyone coming into our businesses? And if you don't have that, then, you know, then we're just doing a subdivision that can then get into like tons of litigation, was my thinking. So that's just something I want to.
That's good thinking.
Like clarify what, how, you know, if we have a condition, how do we?
We can't guarantee that people are going to get along in the future.
Yeah.
If there's one driveway and.
But they have to create a legally enforceable, like, shared thing that runs with the property and encumbers the property, and it changes the value of the property if it's encumbered with a shared driveway.
Yeah, and even easements.
In residential and commercial settings.
Okay.
So I just think, you know, I've been struggling to understand that as the condition. So, you know, I think it has to be consistent across properties that we make sure people have to file something that can be enforceable in the village.
Okay. What's our, what's our mechanism for that?
Well, in this case, it would be up to the applicant either to remove that part of the driveway and parking lot that doesn't conform to zoning, or to come to this board with a site plan that has been reviewed by this board and approved by this board that's a shared parking lot between the two offices.
With the?
I would kind of have a hard time looking at how on this property you would want to have two separate driveway entrances. There's not a lot of space there to get them, so.
And isn't shared parking maybe a better way to go?
I think so.
It's common, and genuinely, the fewer curb cuts are in the interest of good planning.
And also, this is the end of the street, so, you know, the less places where people would come and turn around, the better. It's kind of a reality check there for people that get lost.
So then, so has the non-conforming driveway been approved by the Z B A? Or like, they're proposing a non-conforming parking lot? Oh, that's been approved?
That would be the condition of this approval because as soon as this lot is created, that pavement is right up against the parking, right on the parking lot. So the existing, the existing parking lot actually is on the other side of that lot. So they'd have to get rid of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you guys want some more time to look at the resolution?
I think, I do.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. You mean versus approving it tonight?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, no, I'm not ready yet.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. The rest of the board okay with that?
Fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll resume this at the next meeting, all right?
Yeah, then 20th.
20th. Okay, moving right along, site plan review. 51 Pond Lane is adjourned to July 5th. So that brings us to Heart of the Hamptons, 44 Meeting House Lane. Before we jump into that, I just want to encourage the board, the rest of the board, to make a site visit because I was having a hard time understanding how the applicant was going to make this work. Because we were talking about sidewalks, and I assumed that sidewalks were parallel with streets. But the sidewalk you were referring to is actually perpendicular to the street and touches the building. So I walked over there and looked and walked around the parking lot, and it all became clear to me. So if anybody has any clarity issues, just, it might be one of those things where a site visit is helpful. And I also ask you to make a little video to show us, and I think you're going to show us that tonight. And I just want to say, I really appreciate this above and beyond because I know you've been through it with another board.
Our volunteers and our staff were very happy to do it.
I'm sure it was fun.
Really excited to come over there to see how it's going to work.
Through all movie stars.
Exactly.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Molly Bishop, speaking on behalf of Heart of the Hamptons. We did send the video over to Alex, and so I think he's prepared to share it on his screen whenever you're ready for that. I also, our architect, Ben Chalif, is here. We did revise the plans. We just did that today, and we'll submit them to the Building Department tomorrow. But we, in response to your message about the dumpster, we did relocate the dumpster away from the building. We are really open to any suggestion on where to put the dumpster, but the Fire Marshal said it needs to be a certain number of feet away from the building. So we did move it, and like I said, if you have other thoughts of where else to move it to, we're fine with that, too. So I don't know, do you want to see the video first? If Alex is ready?
I'm happy you cleared up if you'd like.
Thanks, Alex. So we went over with our volunteers and our staff to 44 Meeting House Lane to do sort of a mock food distribution, and sort of illustrated the way. to do sort of a mock food distribution and sort of illustrated the way cars will come in and how they will queue and then how long it takes, which is just less than a minute to come in and, and wait and then get your bags and then leave. And then we also showed how other cars can pass by while we're doing this without any problem, so.
That's something that becomes apparent with a site visit too.
Yes.
And what time of day was this?
This was just this past Thursday at nine thirty AM. And there were only about nine cars in the parking lot that were not our own staff and volunteers at that time.
And that's a similar timeframe to when you were.
We normally do ten AM. I think ten AM is probably even a little bit quieter, just based on Hill Street. Nine and nine thirty is when things start to quiet down as far as cars coming out this way. By ten, pretty much everybody's at work. So I think it's probably pretty similar and, and also the summer months, I think I've mentioned to you guys, certainly to the Village Board of Trustees, the summer months are really much quieter for us than the winter. So doing this in June, you know, sort of shows what it'd be like at the worst time of the year, you know, for, for the village, not for us. So. I think it starts there. All right, Alex, I guess you can start it and then I'll answer any questions that you have.
Sure, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great, I'm gonna hit play.
So is that showing another car passing by?
Yes.
Okay.
A very large car.
Yeah.
And the cones are always set up whenever there's distribution?
No, we just did that to, to sort of see, to space it. We wouldn't necessarily have to have the cones.
Probably be a good idea.
Yeah. Pretty simple.
Perfect. Yeah.
So, I mean, we do use cones now in our, at our current location because the parking lot at the Sacred Arts Church is a little complicated. You're only supposed to go certain ways. So we, we could certainly utilize that. We also always have a staff person that's in the parking lot just to make sure people understand that, that they don't, you know, pull down the wrong way. So we would certainly do that in, in the new location too.
Okay, so I have a, a couple of questions and suggestions, but is there a way to get the site plan up on the screen?
Maybe Alex can do that also?
Okay.
This is revised one, if you wanna look at that.
This is revised one.
Cat can, or do we still have capability?
If Alex has it already, he can.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the dumpster that changed, so.
He doesn't have the newest one.
Yeah, let's see the newest one.
And I have small ones for you guys. I'm sorry, I'm Ben Chalif from Chalif and Rogers Architects and I got really tired of being on Zoom for these meetings, so I came in person because.
So this is the dumpster new location?
This is the dumpster new location, which is not drastically different, but it's, are waiting for the building? This is a work session, I thought it was okay, right? And then submit formally tomorrow?
We'll submit tomorrow. Also, if you guys have any thoughts, we could modify and submit what you, what you suggest.
I can't even see it, I don't know.
It moved, it moved from right here by this, this skylight on the building to right here with now these trees on either side of it and closer to the road so that it is, it is away from the building.
And it would still have to be accessed from the parking lot?
No, now it could be accessed from our own parking lot.
Either, either parking lot, really.
Either one, really, but.
Okay, I, I, I like the idea of it being accessed from your own parking lot just because I'm having, and I need to talk to Alice about this, but the hardest part of this application to me is approving something that is encumbering another property that's really not part of the site plan. And I know, I mean, I'm beginning to understand how it can work, but somebody needs to legally explain to me how that will work. And then the other thing that I wanted to, I just, I think the most, one of the most important parts of this application, this site plan, is the space to the north of the building on the west property line. Wait, let me make sure my. Yeah, that strip, that piece of land that goes from the northwest corner of the property to the road. Cause that's where it's all happening, right? Like that's.
From, from here?
You're saying right here?
Yeah, like, you know.
I don't think they're planning many activities there, I mean.
Well, people are gonna be walking back and forth, dropping off bags from there.
Well, there's a sidewalk between the building.
Yeah.
There's, there's multiple doors on the west side of the building and there's, there's a sidewalk between the north.
But what's the terrain like? Is, is somebody gonna have to step over or off of?
No, it's just a sidewalk.
There's an existing sidewalk that's, that's very mildly sloped, but it's all paved in, in concrete.
From?
Between the building and where the grass buffer starts. And then north of that, for current purposes, is the large testing site where they, where they stuck their.
The sign.
Testing site, billboard, if you will, that's there now currently. But south of that and bef, between the building and that grass buffer is, is the sidewalk, is a proper sidewalk. Right.
You're pointing it.
Yeah.
Right there.
That's existing.
Yeah, but, so, see where the, the concrete line ends?
Right here, you mean, or this way?
Oh, on the west side.
Can you point on the table, please?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get to all these consensus here, we're talking about the same place. If you're talking about where anything becomes asphalt.
What is, what, how does, how does that seamlessly connect?
It's just flat concrete.
And there's no grade change, there's no two inch change in paving that people are gonna possibly trip over.
No, cause we took wagons there, like with all the bag, with the bags that we had out, we took the wagons across that and just totally fine and then put them on the grass.
I didn't bring a picture, but I, I showed it from my screen during the last work session. I showed you the image and I think that helped clarify things for, for people, but, no, it was, it was from standing here looking back at the building, but maybe if you guys visit that again, visit the site, you could, you could see that again, but we can certainly provide an image, but no, it's, it's, I mean, that, it's, it's a very accessible route.
Okay.
So the sidewalk has no curb? The sidewalk just?
Not in that location. The curb, the curb is, is here on, on either side of this grass median. There's, there's a curb, although it's, it's a different.
Only down here by the road, I think, cause here, I think the grass just blends into the.
Right, on the west side, it just blends in. There's really, the curb is really here between their parking lot and the median.
And would it help for smoother operations if that, the concrete sidewalk on the north side of the building was wider in any way?
I mean, it's not narrow.
It's not narrow. And we could, you know.
The overhang of the building maybe makes it seem narrower than it is here, but, so there's really another two feet of, of sidewalk. If you see the secondary line, that's actually the footprint of the building.
We just think you last, you just pulled up a Google image of it when it was the ambulance barn. And you could see the ambulance vehicles parked in that loading area also.
I mean, it's enough, we've even talked about it being wide enough for their pallet jack to, to traverse, so it's, it's certainly enough for.
So what, how wide is it?
I don't have a scale with me, but it's, it's at least four feet wide. It might be five.
I have a scale.
Of course you do.
Which kind you want?
This is engineering, please. Thank you very much, Gary. It is five feet.
Okay. How wide is a pallet? Does anybody know? Four feet?
Less than five.
It's less than four because I can carry it and it's not the same size as me.
No, I mean, how wide is a pallet?
No, I mean, I think it's four by four.
It's like.
Because it's about a.
It's rectangular, but it's like.
It's rectangular.
I think it's like four by five, okay. Great.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so here Gloria has pulled this up, how it comes flat right down to the road.
Right.
And it's just, it looks like a sidewalk, but it's really just flat, just like the parking lot.
I was just thinking that because it's like the hub of drop off there that maybe double that width might be helpful, so two people could stand side by side with bags and not being on muddy grass and.
As was in the video, I, I don't think they intend to, I think they intend to use the door on the west side of the building to actually bring.
Oh, I didn't notice that in the video.
Yeah, there's a door.
Okay.
We're closing up one door that's at the, that the, almost the meat, totally northern end of the west elevation, but there's an existing window opening a little bit south of that where there would be a, a new door.
Okay.
And that, I think, is, is well clear of that, of that whole median and that would be their primary.
They would come right through the west side door.
Okay.
No coming around.
Right, great. That's all I have.
I, I had two questions. One, in some other iteration, was the freezer attached to the side of the building? Because where it is now seems closer to the neighbor's property, so I, like the idea of it being detached to the building with a remote compressor, did that change somewhere in the?
Well, originally, we had it attached to the building and that was the, one of the first iterations.
Yeah.
It was on, on the east side of the building, but that made it in a non-conforming location because it was treated as the principal structure when it's attached. So when it becomes detached, it, it could have the ten foot setback, which it has now to the property line. But something, since we talked about this last time, we've spoken with a few walk-in companies and, and it's, it's feasible that the compressors, which are the noise-making parts of the walk-in, will be remote located inside of the building. So as far as testable levels outside, it will be basically nonexistent from those, from those compressors. And there's one for the refrigeration and one for the freezer section of the walk-in, but they can both be in the stockroom part of the, of the building.
Okay, so yeah, then the question is, can you definitely do that? Because if it makes noise, then it's, you know, right near the pool, I think, you know. So since it's closer to the property line, you know, I think it's important to know whether that can in fact be remote or if they're.
It's our, it's our, it's our understanding, we've spoken with the technical divisions of, of a walk-in company and it, it seems to be something that's done actually quite frequently. So it's, it's possible and that's what we intend to do.
Okay. And then my other question, this came up last time, was about the garage doors. Cause I don't think, I don't feel like that's a good idea where any food at all is located unless you have the interior doors. And, you know, and then it was said last time, well, that, we're not dealing with, we're only dealing with exterior, but I think it, you know, we could sort of ask for exterior doors unless there's that double door situation. Cause I feel like that's a kind of a risky thing to have any kind of food where, with the garage door.
Okay, and we listened to your point and talked about changing them possibly to carriage doors, but the overhead door, first of all, we're removing, you know, there's existing two overhead doors there because it was an ambulance barn, right? We're, we're closing one in with windows, the, the western one. And we're improving the eastern one in terms of appearance so that it's much more in keeping with a, with a particular, you know, more traditional look than, than just a metal door. But the, the thing about the overhead door is that it, it has a track. The track would interfere with any sort of partition set in on the inside. It would be very difficult, I should say, to make a partition unless you're the full depth of the door in from it and then they're losing storage space. So we're still trying to work that out, but at the very least know that, that stock, stockroom, which is at the northeast corner of the building, that that door opens into, first of all, it's, it would be open relatively infrequently. They get deliveries once a week typically and then one, a second delivery once every ten days, you said. So it's open very briefly, but also the, the set point of that stockroom is not the same as, as an office or other occupied spaces. It can, it can be a cooler temperature in the winter and a, and a warmer temperature in the summer. So in terms of energy loss from having the door open, would, would be open very shortly and it's not spilling seventy degree air out in, in the wintertime. If that was your, one of your concerns, but it was also appearance?
No, it was more airtightness where stuff could get in, like.
I mean, we're, we're proposing a brand new door here. I mean, the existing one, there's nothing wrong with it really, but other than aesthetically, it, it's not as nice as what we're proposing here, so.
Aesthetically, it seems nice. I just was wondering, like supermarkets don't have, you know, it's not a supermarket and I realize you're not storing as much food there, but like anytime there's food anywhere, like we just have a lot of wildlife, it seems, you know.
Right.
So, so that, you know, you, you don't see any kind of food establishment with any kind of door like that because it had, it's not airtight, it's not like a regular door.
Understood.
To your, whatever.
This, this would be an insulated weatherstrip door, first of all, and the amount of time that it would be open would be very short and there would be constantly volunteers during that time because they're actually bringing food in. So it's not like it's left open and then they walk away. But we are still visiting that concept of having some secondary air curtain or some other, some other shield to, to keep heated and cooled air in as, as it, as it is such, but also you should know that the remainder of the building, now it's, it's uninsulated brick mason reconstruction for the first floor, but we didn't get into this again because it's the planning board, but we are going to be remediating the entire entirety of the, on the inside with, with a new furtile out wall with new insulation and new finish. So energy is something we're, we're certainly wary of and concerned about for this building. So it will be a much lower use energy building than is as if you turn this current structure into a new use. It would, we're, we're very much taking that into account.
Okay, but no, no thought about just making regular doors that are bigger size so a pallet could get in? Because it used to be an ambulance barn, so those doors made sense for an ambulance barn, but is it just the aesthetics or is it that just?
It's some of both. I mean, to make, to make these like swinging carriage doors, it, it's very handy, first of all, to have that opening size for the, for the odd time that they have, you know, a large delivery. So it's, we're losing one of them already, so it, it seems like it would be very convenient to keep that large opening, but we're, we're improving the nature of the door, I think, vastly from, from its current state. And the appearance.
Is your concern that when the door's open, something's gonna run you?
Or not open, just because there's food in there. Like if, if stuff could, I mean, my concern comes from like rodents getting into the garage and, you know, through doors, like constantly and there's no food. So what happens if there is food? But like without food, there's just tons of things in, in my garage.
Oh, this is coming from personal.
I don't know, just garages, just garages as opposed to stores or food establishments that don't, like we, we're in, you know, we're not in the middle of the country, but there's a ton of.
Yeah.
Raccoons, stuff, that's my concern.
You have some sort of.
I think honestly, I think that the opportunities might be greater throughout the rest of the village in terms of available food and in terms of restaurants and things like that that actually have open food. They're dealing largely with, with canned and boxed and, and other foods that aren't uncontained, you know, so.
Accessible.
And, and, and all the perishable food goes immediately either into freezer or refrigerator. So they're largely dealing with canned and, and container food that's in this stockroom.
I was gonna say, I think that the restaurants are much more appealing.
There's some very fine restaurants.
I were a mouse.
All right.
No, we are definitely, I thought it was a great suggestion and we are definitely still talking about how to accommodate it inside. And, and, you know, Ben, Ben did bring up, oh, well, then the garage door's gonna go overhead. Is it just a three-quarter door? So, I mean, it's definitely something we wanna think about as we move forward with the interior plans. We just don't have the solution quite yet.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't think, yeah, no, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. I just, in the way I was looking at it, it's, it's like you don't see any, you know, it's in, it's a special use, which is, but you don't see that design for that use as far as I've seen.
I think most grocery stores, they do have like a loading dock like that with a garage door and that's where like the pallets come.
In the back of, yeah.
In the back of like Schmitz or the grocery store or whatever. And like Ben said, it's really just canned items that would be stored on the shelves there and any perishable items would go right into the walk-in or a fridge or a freezer.
But it wouldn't be left unattended in an open position. I, I don't see that happening, maybe. When, when the food delivery comes, you have volunteers there and other assistants to, to get things in, you know, relatively quickly, right?
Well, the idea with this is that the pallet jack would just drive it right in and then we could unload it inside. But now we have to unload box by box down into a conveyor belt in the basement. And, and this would just be the, the driver could just drive the pallet jack right inside the building and leave it and, and then we unpack it.
Right, so it's open and then it's almost immediately closed.
And we'll put a few, few volunteers on like wildlife watch while the doors open.
We have to submit, you know, we have to submit that to the food banks that we get food from, like a weekly pest check and.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
Refrigerator logs and all kinds of stuff like that.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay. Yeah, so the public hearing is next week, in two weeks. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have some minutes that can be approved, I think. Let me just check and see what. Sixty?
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve the meetings for, the, the minutes from the May 16th meeting as they stand. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I approve.
Okay.
I gotta, I gotta go to bed soon, guys, go home.
All right, go to bed, we're, we're gonna, I, um, I'm sorry, did we miss something?
Well, I'm here about the Pulaski Hall matter and there's a sign posted there that says it's going to be considered at the meeting tonight at 6 o'clock. So, maybe I'm mistaken.
No.
No, that's, that's been approved. Yeah, that, that matter's closed, ma'am. That, um, we approved the handicap, the, the ADA.
Because according to the article in the South Hampton Press this past week, there appeared to be some open items concerning that application. And there is a sign there that says there's going to be a hearing about it.
Uh, that might be the zoning board.
There is a pending zoning board application on that matter.
Oh, okay. So when's the zoning board meeting, Alex, do you know?
Uh, yeah, let me just double-check the calendar.
Well, this is the first time I've ever gotten involved with anything like this, so I'm quite ignorant about how things operate.
There, there are several boards that have different.
Different meetings.
Different meetings.
June 14th, right internet? Tuesday, June 14th.
Tuesday, June 14th.
Same place.
Same place, different board.
Okay, so will I be able to find the information about that on the village website?
Should.
Should be able to.
Yeah.
Alex, can you just double-check their noticing for that as well?
Because when I went on the websites, I did, there was no agenda for this meeting. Listed this meeting, but there was no list of items that were going to be considered. So that's again my mistake, but I thought it was this meeting tonight, so. So when the ZBA has a meeting, will there be a list of items that are going to be considered?
I haven't.
It generally is.
Which application is she questioning? Cause I have the agenda for the 14th in front of me.
It's the Pulaski Hall.
It's the Polish Political Hall.
230 Elm, 230 Elm.
Hold on, I'm just checking.
Oh, no?
No, I don't see it on here. Alex, am I wrong?
Um, I have to double-check, it may have been, I know it was heard at the last meeting, it may have been adjourned to a future date.
Yeah, that was heard last week for sure.
Yes.
I, I don't have it on the June 14th agenda.
If you get the word here for it, it was a long time.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry, the very bottom, yes. It is number eight, uh, 230 Elm Street and it will be heard, yes.
So that's June 14th?
Yes, June 14th, I'm sorry, I was all the way at the bottom.
And what time is that meeting?
6 o'clock.
Okay, so 6 p.m., June 14th.
Right, but it may be a while before you get to item eight.
And it won't be us? It'll be a different board?
The zoning board, all right.
All right.
Well, thank you for your patience.
When you come in, there's an agenda. If you come again to get involved with the villagers' agenda, so you can follow along with what's going on.
You wanna take note of how many things are adjourned? Cause sometimes there's six items and four are adjourned. Just when you pick up your agenda, look at that, I'm so sorry, good job.
Okay.
And in the meantime, the files are available for review in the Building Department. If anybody wants to come submit a request.
Well, we are saying it is on the agenda right now for the next meeting, which is June 14th.
Yeah, but sometimes matters get adjourned, so I would, I would suggest maybe when you get to that date that you check in with the Building Department and make sure it has not been adjourned.
Okay.
So you don't, you know, shop and waste your time.
All right. Thank you.
Sure, have a good evening. So I guess we're ready to close the meeting, right? Okay, I'd like to move that we close the meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.